As far as I can tell, there's nothing negative about you. So if there's that implication, now you weren't on the city council. So I guess I was gonna let anybody ask me a question who wants to, but I guess can't. But I've had people pull up my yard signs, I've lost voters, and I said, is it because of what's being said on Facebook about me? And they said, yes. And... I see you on there. I don't think I've really ever had maybe one heated conversation with you. But... If you, if you can find a Facebook post where I said anything negative about you, I'd like to see it. Have you ever seen one?
I'm on Facebook.
I'm talking to Eric.
You were looking at me.
But I remember having a conversation where we're over in the building, you're in the trailer. I remember you said, what's, what is our group's agenda? And I said, we just wanna know about the expenses. I said, yeah, twenty-six. So that's how our group got started. Two people approached me, and we're worried about the spending.
I have a question. Would you be willing to stick around after the meeting and talk one-on-one with people?
Yeah, I...
Okay, great.
If someone's posting all these things about me, yes, drive by my house every day.
Okay, so...
Should stop and talk to them. I'd have, I'd have a cordial conversation with them.
So you're gonna hang out after?
That's time.
Think that's good.
Good.
Cool.
All right.
Hi, Jess. Let's go to the card. My name is Carter Samuel, at four thirteen Shoreline Drive. First lights next to the council for allowing a forum for us to speak our minds. I'm a Realtor, I'm a builder, I'm a developer, it's what I do. I currently own two properties, two lots here on the west side, co-owned, three lots on the east side. I'm in New York City, some, a few more on this west side. I tell you all that because I wanted to address the lot that the city owns on Shoreline, the last lakefront lot, essentially. When I first inquired about it, I was told you're gonna build a boat ramp there, and I was actually pretty excited. I thought that was a great idea, I thought it would bring great things for, for myself, for everyone in the community. And as I thought about it more and more, I started asking more questions to myself, and about this boat ramp, and about the high traffic it might bring, and about the policing that we might have to do for this boat ramp, and about the maintenance we might have to do for this boat ramp to our roads, and I think you can go on and on for those things. But as a Realtor, I will say this. I know that, obviously, we all know that this market is, is kind of an influx, and that's great for everything. I know what the lot's worth, in my professional opinion, and I know what kind of money that can bring to the city, the city council. It's just my opinion that this lot could probably mend seventy-five to ninety-nine thousand dollars easily. That's just my thoughts. Do I have selfish reasons for addressing this? Absolutely, I do. I would love to buy the lot, not as a developer, but as a person who would like to build it forever and long. As I stated, I live on Shoreline now. The house that I'm in now, I kind of have grounded. I've done the best I could to develop it, add on, so on, but it's just, it's what it is. So selfishly, yes, I would love to be the person who buys this lot. Professionally, and from someone who loves this city, I do think it would garner a big profit for the city. So I'm not going to ethically lie to you and tell you it's worth fifty thousand, and I hope it's worth something. Having said that, I have no reservations or... I'm not one, I'm not one-sided about the issue. If you guys decide to build a boat ramp, and that's the way the city council decides to go with it, I'm on board. Yeah, I'm a one-hundred percent backing on that. I'll do what I can to support it and to, to help manage it, lease it. I just don't think it's the, the best idea for the city. I feel the city could pretty much cash out from that lot and put that maybe somewhere else for its development. I understand there might be a park on the east side. That's important to me as well, personally and professionally, because I own the three lots here, I buy that property with the parks. So again, I wanna thank you guys for the time, and please know that whichever way, I don't know when you plan to address it, how you plan to address it, but whichever way the city ends up going there, you'll have my support either way. Okay? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Don? Is there a Don that wanted to speak? I'm sorry, I apologize, keep your distance.
That is Don?
Yes, sir. At one twenty-five, Ron, is that it?
Yes, sir. My wife runs the office where I live. Good evening, councilmembers and the mayor, I'm Don Shepherd. I reside in Lakeside City since nineteen ninety-one, the same address. I elected to drive this community because it's small, it gives me a lot of the heady muscle of the city next door to us that I admire and use as much as you guys do. We don't have the facilities out here that are there, so we, we, we're there, we use what they have. I served for a couple of years as a volunteer fireman, but I also served as your mayor, my councilmember, and the city administrator for the city. During my tenure, we made a lot of accomplishments. I read a Facebook post today, or my wife read it to me, because I don't do Facebook, she does, she does, but I don't do Facebook. I call it a mouth. The comment was made that we, we kicked the can down the road, we've not addressed issues. You know, I take issues with it. We have dealt with a lot of issues, which I'd say, the Everstanding Tower of the Jet fix, that didn't just get there by ourselves. We have parks, they didn't get there, the grants that were secured, someone had to chase that, fought through troubles on the community. They helped make that come to pass, or come to fruition. I am up here in the city because I am very concerned about the city, about what I see going on. The infighting, the bickering is very shallow, in my opinion. I think adults, people that don't conduct themselves as adults, professionals respecting adults, respecting one's opinions. I mean, I agree and disagree, but agree and disagree and go on, but don't talk about them. I have made Facebook, surprisingly. I've been helping walk with Steve a little bit, because we, as a past administration, are concerned about some things that are going on. I've got some concerns that I still have to address, I will be addressing in the future with individuals involved. And I really, I know I came to the last council meeting, I listened to Eric, I listened to your comments about Eric. I respect him, although I agree with him, I respect him. There are things that the city needs to address. I heard, so I wanna talk about the parks, so you are for things, and that's good, you have to be. But to say or insinuate that we have not been always trying to do things to improve the city hurts, because we don't have a lot. You talk about drainage issues. A lot of this is for doing, a lot of this is fulfilled in the home, we reload it. You still have issues like that. You have an INI problem out here. Primarily, because most of the citizens want their backyard flat, do not want a green obstacle city on the back end. You have made INI possible by putting your green, green lids at your own level, the water's present. The new system you're trying to do, or you're, you're doing, may or may not help in all of that. Apparently, you're considering paying as well, but I think there are other issues. I mentioned drainage a while ago, that's where we elected to start, start at the top with the problems. We've talked, and one of the reasons we're walking around and talking to those, is get their feedback. We stopped in the yard yesterday from Zellman and said, I can't stand the city. Okay, why are you still here? I have been rained out, or flooded out, two, three times, and it's cost me a lot of dollars. I know where it is, and I know that that was the area we addressed. You can't fix everything, and you can't stop people from doing certain things. I have gone out as your city administrator then and tried to convince people, don't build on that lot. They did anyway. Last thing I'll say, Al, we, for years, tried to keep a cap on a number of homes we had out here for the one reason only, service. Our service system is overcast now, what's then. And since I've gone, there was a council member who brought to you, to you a desire to create zero occupancy. You know, I, I think it was a mistake. I'm not saying you guys made it, it was a mistake to do that, because now you've got four thousand that are using a service system that, the service system is already behind, and there's been problems down there as well, but... We... Oh, you're gonna go find Bill. I'll take part of Steve's time. The, the biggest concern I have is...
Sir, your time's up.
You're not listening, as a council.
Your time's up.
If you don't listen, watch out.
Mr. Holler? Yeah, you're next.
Councilman Cory, thank you for the opportunity. Wanted to touch on a couple of things tonight. I've been putting out some flyers about my thoughts about some things that the city has done. It's no, no surprise, what have you. In that flyer, the very last paragraph, unfairly laid some blame where it did not belong, that's what Miss Williams. And I apologize to you for that. I did that, you may not have seen the email yet, I went to Lakeside City's webpage, I went to your campaign, and I wanted to do that here tonight in a public forum. That was not fair to her, that was not my thoughts in that wording. You kind of, I mean, you got lumped in there unfairly. You were not part of that council in it, and I apologize, and I am so sorry that I did that. It's interesting, though, you know, the, the things that end up on Facebook, you know, whenever you do things, I guess you gain notoriety in the city from both, I guess, citizens as well as council. You know? I did, for the record, I did go back to those same houses today that I left those flyers on. I put another, a little bit skinny one, and said, hey, I made a mistake on there. Because that's how I wrote, you know, if I make a mistake, I stand tall and I try and make it as right as I can. But like Don said, there are things that are... I hate to see it in our city. A lot of people move here, this is, I'm preaching to the choir, a lot of people move here to get away from the big city stuff. Our, our, our way of life here is, is wonderful, it's why I came here. You know, plus four's laws, like my neighbor, that could pick on me. You know, we went to church together back when I was stationed here, and so we go back on what here, there. But some of this, you know, I agree with Don, and to some extent with, with Mike, that, you know, it's a tough job to sit up there when people throw rocks at you, or disagree, or comment about things that, you know, if you have a position on, or if you have feelings about, I got that, been there, done that, okay? But I think we, we're kind of, we're getting down into some stuff on Facebook and on, you know, I guess, social media, if you will, where it's almost, it almost seems like if you disagree with council, or you have an opinion that's contrary, or whatever, you're attacked, you know, in one way or another, you know? Drops are thrown, names are called, all kinds of other mess. And I, I have thick skin, I can handle that, I'm a little short fat guy. But without, putting those things out, yes, you know? It does bother me, but, but it does bother me. You know, because our citizens should be able to express themselves, you know, to you guys, as well as to each other, you know, to communicate with like, you know, mindsets and what have you, you know? So I just have a lot of concerns on that. It's no surprise, I mean, I, I disagree, Cory and I talked about this, you know, I didn't think we needed this building, whatever. Well, the milk's all over the floor, yeah, it's okay, I mean, the money is spent, we've got a nice new building, that's nice. I still maintain that we didn't need it, you know? We'll just continue to agree or disagree on that matter. And I think that's all I have, I'm gonna be on air. I give a little remainder of my time to some of this.
Sir? Mr. Whitfield?
My name is Ronnie Whitfield, I live at six hundred Shoreline. My wife and two children moved here almost six years ago. And we moved here to raise a family here. It's, it's a great place, and honestly, it's been a gift to our family living here. And so I thank you all for serving in the capacity that you do. Now seeing that there's a whole lot more that goes on, and a lot of decisions that are made, that are not gonna make everyone happy. And so thank you for serving in this way. I just wanted to come tonight out of concern with just everything that's going on with election and all of that, and a lot of changes. And, and a comment that was made a couple of weeks ago by the interim city administrator about this boat ramp and the lot there on Shoreline, which, to the best of my knowledge, is the only public access to the lake here on this side. About, and I know there's been things over the years, since I've been here, as far as with the revitalization of the lake, what they're gonna do over here, but the comment about the parking lot being put there. And then also, now even more evident, a comment that was made too about Mr. Sanderball purchasing that. And I understand that that lot was given on a quick, plain deed to the city for the citizens here. And knowing also that there are citizens who have lived here for decades, that live next to that lot, the Livers, Hutchins on the other side, Everts across the way, the Vaxons on the other side. None of us know anything about that. And even when, when they moved here, asked about purchasing that lot, no, it's the city, the city has it. It's, you know, it's public for access to the public here. And so I, I would like to just say that anything that has to do with, with that area in particular, asking the people who've been here for decades, asking for their input. And also for someone who already has multiple lots in Lakeside City, and then wants to benefit themselves for that, where this is something for this community, to be able to use for this community here. I think it's something to consider, and to consider asking the people who've been here way much longer than I have about the use of that. I would love to see that used by the citizens here, I would love to see more done here. I don't think it's something to be used by people from Wichita Falls, and people from, when they have access on that side over there. But I, I would just encourage that, to have that conversation with the people who've been there, the people who've asked about that. And now, now with the administration changing and all of that, and then something being done where the people who've been here for a really long time don't have any knowledge of it. I, I just think that that would be, I just don't think it would be right. Thank you all very much.
Crystal Everett?
Do you wanna dab?
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're welcome.
Hi, Crystal Everett, six oh two Shoreline, I'm here with my husband, Bobby Everett, and I'm gonna render some of my time back, mainly for the same reason, to support Ronnie and Ashley as well. And we've been here four years, my grandfather's lived here in terms of ninety Saturday, he moved during seventy-nine, Bill Baker on six oh three Shoreline. We moved here because this is where we've always wanted to live. I grew up, Halloween's here, it was the place that I just, although we don't have small children, it's just the environment we want to be in. We've lived here for four years and not had one single problem, and to be honest, until all of this came about, I did not know anything that's going on. I was informed when I purchased the house, however, that that was a city lot. The only concern I have on it is I'm not, and I, and maybe you do, and I'm just not aware of it, is there are some peculiar things that take place there, and if you live next door to it, or across the street from it, you see a lot of things. You see people at all hours of the night, you hear loud noises, we rev cars up, we drive motorcycles, we, I don't know who those people are, by the way, don't beep. But it's most definitely something that we've had to put cameras up at our house, because we do take pride in our yard, when it's been those landscaping business after hours. It's, people driven through our yard, I don't know, maybe left the lake and were a little intoxicated and decided to just circle on through. My concern is that they will venture over into our area. And, and as of right now, since October, due to COVID, I've been working from home, so I've not had the problem. But I know in the past, we've had to put cameras up at our house to ensure that packages were not stolen, and that's just not the community that we've lived in for the past four years. I think opening that up to public will invite trouble in, personally. I also agree with Ronnie that when I did purchase the house, I liked the fact that I felt the city owned that, and that would be an entrance for us to go in, as I'm not aware of any other entrance, entrance either. And if there is, I, I just don't know, so I apologize. I, I do business with the gentleman that wants to buy the lot, I respect him, and his opinions are as worthy as mine. I'm just thinking that as a community, we, something needs to be made clear to us, either the city owns it, or the city doesn't. And if the city wants to sell it, then it needs to be a most definite public announcement, not one that's heard about or read about. And I've messaged some people privately, but I'm not, I don't play Facebook games, I'm not a keyboard warrior, I don't believe in it. It's against what I stand for personally, and I'm not saying that it makes someone else bad. But, you know, to get off my soapbox on this, I support whatever the city wants to do with that lot. It would just be nice to know as a person living across the street from it, what that might be, and maybe in advance. Maybe we wanna put a fence up that we don't wanna see that, not necessarily a house, but whatever it may be. What was that? I, I love living here, I really, I just, I can't tell you all, it has just been like the best four years, literally, where we lived before, which is in Wichita Falls. And it's just, it's a great place. I, I watch my grandpa safely walk around these roads, and it's just somewhere that I wanna grow old in. And I'd like to see it get back to that, to a, a community where people say hello to each other. And my ma, all, so the select neighbors, and we're all here based on this, it's nice to walk out your door and know somebody said, hey, your dog's looking over the fence, and he's carrying my child's chickens, and I'm like, that's six foot tall, he's a dog, you can't... You know, we've had a conversation, and we live in the industry that I'm in, in healthcare, and Cory and I do some work together outside in the, in that, and of course, five minutes is never long enough for me, I know that's what my husband's saying here. And, you know, to be in a community and deal with all the things that we're dealing with outside of here, it would be really nice. If we could all learn to get along, and maybe just keep things to a minimalist, and keep this city as it was when I, what we intended to move into. Because we have loved it, all of it, and our neighbors rock, so if y'all aren't on Shoreline, sorry, I'm not on our street. Thank you all for your time, and we, we just appreciate your consideration of taking our, our, our points of thought as we move forward with that. I'll render my eight seconds to Ashley.
Mr. Sturgis?
Hi, my name is Laurie Sturgis, I've been here since nineteen eighty-five. I moved here because it was a nice community, I knew about it, because I was, I used to deliver mail to Lakeside City as a mailman. And until I found a better route, that I didn't have to get out. But, and it was always the dirty little secret in Lakeside City, if it rained, you couldn't flush your toilets. Nobody talked about it, nobody said that, in the Realtor, but they talked, but it happened. And I only have one child, but if I had three children, and I couldn't flush the toilets, that'd be a major problem. And being here since eighty-five, I've always thought, there's always been four things that we need to bring. One is safety, I believe safety is very important to a community. It makes the community grow, that you know you're safe, and you can take your children out. And by having a one-way in, one-way out with a camper, you can't ask better than that kind of safety. Nowhere that I know of is like that. Two is water, we have a beautiful water tower that's clean now, you don't have to worry about bad water. And because of the freeze we had, we had the water in those tanks that we could have flowed. Even though a lot of people were out of electricity, you couldn't, if you didn't have water, it would have been a lot worse. Three is, we have power lines, we don't have gas, but we have electricity, and we have a source that comes through, and they just built a new power line, which is great. The fourth thing is sewer. As a member of the sewer task force, we had to look into what was done in the past. And they talked about the INI. Those who do not know what's INI, need to look on our website, that's the word. We had a North Texas Planning Commission representative come out here and talk. If anybody ever go back and look at that, it was very interesting. He talked about a community that just let the community go, and doesn't do anything to rebuild or maintain, and they ended up with an eight million dollar recovery fine. So, I don't know about you, but an eight million dollar tax increase would really hurt my budget. So that's what is really important. The INI situation, that when I talk to people about getting grants, they talk about where you stand. We didn't know where we stood, we had no idea. Nobody told us how much water flow, we knew from Eric, because he told us, well, we average thirty, thirty-three thousand a day, and then we up to three hundred thousand. When I talk about that to the people about getting grants, they go, oh my gosh, what is going on? How many residents? That is something we had to go, so we had to get a baseline. So what the city had allowed a commission, a sewer task force to get that information, which was very strong on their part, and I thank you again for that, because you had to come up to make your decision. As members of the city council, you had to figure out what we need. So we had to go back and figure it out, and we found out that no information was available. We had a certain amount of money, I think seven hundred ninety-two thousand...
Seven hundred twenty-three.
Seven hundred twenty-three thousand dollars.
And change.
And change. And we had to make sure, how are we gonna use that money to best serve the community? And give the information to the council, so they can make the right decision. So we decided, through our researching, that we need to get some baseline data. And that data was, first of all, where do we stand on our sewers? Nobody knew. Where are our sewer tanks? Nobody knew. You go to residents, I don't know, I have had a sewer, what's that, isn't that that green tank? No, you don't have a sewer, it's different. It's not like, like Wichita Falls, that you just flush and go, and wet, and you don't know where it goes. There's a lot of things that have to be done environmentally, to be taken care of, by TEC, by OSHA, EPA, all those groups. That's why you have to have a licensed person to clean out your sewer. So by doing that, we allow, the, the city council allowed us to say, hey, we're gonna pay for you to clean, clean them out. We're gonna put riders on it, because we found out people have riders, they don't even know where their sewers are, they're under the concrete. So I know my time is almost up, to make sure that the council members make the decision. That's what they're elected to do. Thank you.
Eric Stevens?
Eric Stevens, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to see all of a sudden, I think, I think this, I said, I'm there, I would like to, there's a lot of things that I would like to say, I only got five minutes. I'm not gonna sit here and answer every one of the questions that just came up. I know, in regards to the boat ramp, that was something that was done, previous city administrator and previous mayor, and y'all have been on the council, and very much know very little about it, so I would encourage y'all that are interested in doing it, make sure that you understand that this council's not the one that decided or voted on, this was done something years and years. This was done something years and years ago. And two, I'm sort of questioning, just like y'all, how come nobody ever brought the lot? How come it was one of those things when I got uh city administrator that I had to bring the lot? I found out about it and I found all the stuff out of it. Um, I just wanted to say also, thank you. I know a lot of times where y'all are sitting, y'all are at the whip and votes for a lot of things. Y'all get to blame for things. And I know sometimes the decisions y'all have to make are not the easiest decisions. They're not the cheapest decisions. But I know from sitting over there, what I'm doing, y'all make the decisions that's the best for everybody in the community and for years to come. And I appreciate that a bunch of y'all. I know a lot of people don't understand that. They don't want to put forth the effort or the action. They want to be the first one in line to criticize, but when they have the opportunity to run for council or something like that, they don't want to be. They just want to be the ones that criticize. So I thank y'all for y'all's stance, your resilience and stuff like that. To stand in front and take the whip and votes and do it. Because I know a lot of these things are not y'all's fault. Um, two, I just want to say what a great opportunity it's been to stand um with Mr. John Strinsky. Man, he's done an amazing job. Um, I haven't been here this week and half the last week, but it's been great uh to see somebody so eager um and willing to come in and take on this role and do it. I think he'll do a tremendous job and if you had a recommendation for me, it would definitely be Mr. John Strinsky. I also want to thank a lot of here for what he's done with the volunteer fire department and the stuff that he's done over the past few years since he's come in. Chief, I know he's had a lot of obstacles and hurdles to overcome and a lot of naysayers come at you and I do appreciate that. And it's been a pleasure working with you. And I also want to say thank you to Mr. Storm and Mr. Larry Sturgis. These gentlemen stood up when nobody else did. It was an opportunity for everybody in the whole community to be a member and a part, an active part of the sewer task force. And these gentlemen did it. They decided not to, but they want to be the first ones in line to start criticizing everything these guys do. So I want to say thank y'all. I know y'all took in the beating for a lot of the decisions y'all have made. But I know y'all have done it for the community in the best interest for them as a whole. And I do thank y'all for doing that and taking the beating and everything like that. It was one of those things, we wanted to get community members involved. We thought it was better to have everybody have a chance to come in and do it. And these gentlemen stood up and did it. And so I thank y'all for that. Um, there's a lot of other things I could say about this building and uh stuff like that. I know we looked at it for, we tossed things around. I know the first thing was we wanted a fire department. We looked at that and we couldn't give them gold, build them for a dollar, much less anything else. Because what they were going to have to pay to raise the roof to be able to have, one of the brand new fire trucks that got in there wanting to fit in the old city hall. So I know what it was going to cost, the razor roof, restructure and everything else. And so it was one of those, we looked at the most cost-effective way, the most cost-effective thing for us to do was to come in and build a new fire station. We looked at the old city hall and saw all the stuff there. And we said, where are we going to be in ten years with this old city hall? Are we going to be happy with it? There's conditions within. And then are we going to be needing a new city hall in ten years? And we looked at it and said, well, it's probably good for another couple of years, but in ten to twenty years, what is the cost going to be of a new city hall? And so we went ahead and made the decision. And I knew we weren't going to be able to lose a hundred percent of people. But you know, it's funny that there's ninety-eight percent of people not driving and bitching about it and happy with it. And I promise you, moving the fire department down to city hall is probably one of the best things I've done since I've been here. And I appreciate y'all coming together, doing that, making that hard, difficult decision that was hard and standing up for it. And thank you for taking the whip and post on it. And I know if people don't understand the whole thing and do not have the facts. And so I thank y'all for that. That's all I got. Thank y'all. See y'all on the flip side.
That's the last of our citizen comments. Uh, we'll go ahead and move into uh Lakeside City Volunteer Fire Department update. Chief Harris.
Cory.
Don't start the timer.
I don't want to control her, but take away from me.
You're good.
This is me, you. All right, call from March twenty twenty-one. Motor vehicle accident seven, M S seven, one structure, one wild, or excuse you, two wild fires. Also, we're on sale June the fifteenth. We'll probably do our cooking up here. We'll send it to shoreline also. We're all, it will uh have a big, big sub of beer level. Sound light station at the corner down there like always. Park track people appear. Take the money from, get some brick and bricks. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Moving to city manager update. I'm trying to keep this short, um, since I've only been here two and a half weeks. But uh so letters went out uh earlier in the week. For uh those of you that have uh back uh sprinkler systems, the backflow tests are due again. That's has to be done every three years. Um, so we sent out sixty-one letters. Uh, they have thirty days to to get that done. Make sure, just for the record, make sure that whoever it is you contract out to do your your check, they come up here to city hall to get the the paperwork necessary to get those checks going. So we can keep after paperwork for that. Um, that's done every three years. Um, also, we've got a minor drainage project that folks will probably see. It'll be in the front of nine eleven shoreline. Um, I highly encourage residents to uh give me a call or come up here, um, discuss one-on-one. If you've got problems with drainage, let me know. Um, so I can get it put on a list and we can start um working through those problems. We've got some major drainage uh projects coming up. Um, probably start addressing those after uh we've looked at the roads. Um, so we'll continue to to work on that issue. Um, started spearheading up a a park for the east side. Um, that kind of started this week. Um, so starting to work with a gentleman that does a lot of planning on that. Um, I spoke with him actually today. Um, it's actually pretty exciting, the 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 thought process that he has and and the the different things and the new technologies out there that he wants to maybe take a look at for this park. Uh, it's it's going to be a really, really neat uh piece of property. And I told him, um, you know, we Lakeside, we don't want a cookie, another cookie cutter park. You know, we want something neat and usable and and folks are going to use. So um he's talking about obstacle courses and AstroTurf and stuff like that. So um pretty exciting stuff uh coming up. Um, as far as on the lighter side, uh, the Yard of the Month Club or the Yard of the Month program is going to be cranking up. So uh highly encourage everybody to to get your addresses. Uh, you can email them, call them in, however you want to, just start nominating folks uh for the Yard of the Month. Um, and we're working on uh getting some neat little giveaways for those folks that that win. Um, we'll be doing that probably through September. Um, hopefully I'm here through September. And then uh we'll be maybe looking at doing a Halloween decorating contest and maybe uh Christmas lights uh decorating contest, that sort of thing. Um, and then uh last that I have, um aesthetically, so our hydrants have all been tested. They're all good to go. Um, but we will be starting a a program in the very near future and working on getting some quotes. Uh, we'll be aesthetically rehabbing the hydrants. Um, so those are going to look a lot different than they look now. Some are pretty shabby. Um, so all part of making Lakeside City look uh pretty and beautiful. So they're gonna, um, it's going to be a good program. Uh, they'll be easier to find for the fire departments as well. So uh they'll be able to pop um as far as the background, they just have to line it into the houses. Um, so responding units will be able to see those hydrants a lot easier. Um, and we're going to go ahead and we're going to forego uh agenda items C on the agenda and agenda item E. And that's uh due to our um city attorney being helped for the evening. So we'll go ahead and we'll do it. Uh, we'll bring those back on to the agenda in May. That's all.
Real quick, before we move further, Timmy, if I could bother you real quick. Last council meeting, Mr. Stevens stepped down and said, term of the events committee. We just want to show our appreciation off my behalf, council and then the citizens that we represent. We just want to present you this plaque and say thank you for your time and effort for making this community what it is. And we appreciate you and we're going to miss you. Eric, if I can, are you real quick again?
We gotta look it up.
What's that?
Look it up.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, man, just appreciate everything for the city. So I'm behalf of myself, city council and citizens we represent. Just want to present with this, thank you for your hard work, your effort, your passion and your love for this community.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, there is one more plaque that I wish I could give out. Um, he has to work, but Justin Skinner also uh turning his nose and he is no longer with us as well. And so there's a plaque and a city coin for him as well. Uh, I have contacted him and he'll stop by tomorrow. All right. With that, we'll move on to number six, consent agenda. Want to talk about time to look over that, I intend to motion when one is ready.
Motion to consent to agenda.
Mr. Shaker makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Just cover the seconds, hit discussion between council. All of the fair say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes. Brings to the seven, the regular agenda items, seven, eight. Discussing consideration on COVID-nineteen status updates and city protocols. I've I've, I don't have any new updates from the judge. I've been in contact with them, uh, but no new updates.
You know, I haven't heard anything as well. The bathrooms are being opened at usual times and I've actually checked on a few times just during the week and uh they've stayed clean, so Don's on top of it and he's doing an excellent job.
With discussion from the city council, I would ask that we go ahead and remove seven uh seven, eight from further agenda items until unless we have another COVID outbreak or or reason to put it on there. I think uh with Texas being back open, we can go ahead with council approval. We're going to move that agenda item from our, or move the item from here, further agents.
Before we do that, um, is those bathrooms under this agenda? That we set the hours? Does the government, do we go out to visit hours?
Uh, this this opportunity for this agenda item just gives us to discuss any new things that might come down from the governor or from the judge that we do, may have to implement in our city, but.
I didn't know if that affected those hours or not.
Um, we can always put that as a agenda item to revisit, revisit the hours for the bathroom. That's what we do like to call the agenda.
Yes.
Mr. Strinsky, do you add that to next month's agenda item as far as the uh park bathroom hours?
Yes, sir.
All right, that moves us to seven B. I'll go ahead and let you, John.
Dean, four years.
And uh just for the the citizens out there, seven B is discussion and consideration on street repairs.
Okay, I have handed out to the council and to John a.
Okay, then we can say who you are and what you're visiting.
I served as engineer for the city, um, I have since nine three, I think. So, I think that's been a long time.
Just pre-made, you didn't know when we should begin.
Sure. Um, I've given out to the council, revised the plans and adjusted estimate. In fact, we sent an estimate out to you on the sixteenth and we found an error in the in the internal review. And uh we had a five thousand dollar shortage on our estimate because we didn't have the alternate for Billy Joyce seal code in there, but we do have it in our account. So total without alternate, it's like about four fifty, if I remember right. Nacho four fifty-five, eight hundred. The total without those alternates is four twenty-six, three fifty. And uh just to uh give you my opinion about how we should ought to go about bidding it, would be to bid a base bid as a total without alternate items.
Sorry, we're quick, sure. We don't, we don't mind pleasant sorts of quick.
Thank you, sir. My opinion is we ought to do a base bid of the the four hundred twenty-six thousand dollar items squarely and the, and then have the alternate bid items you can add on with with a known price. Um, and if we end up, like we end up with lower than that, that bid's lower than what we expected, we can always negotiate the contract a few more. Um, if you had a chance to look at the plans, you can see that we've added in a lot more seal code and a lot more uh overlay areas. Basically, a lot of our overlay is in high-traffic areas such as entrances, uh entrances on the east side. Entrance going down uh Bowman. And we have some overlay running down mainly down little roads where it's taking a beating. Uh, I've watched that in over the years and it's continued to be great and it's needing some more. Um, probably the worst three of the bunch is Billy Joyce. As far as one that looks like it's about to start failing. And we're, all we're doing on it right now is showing to patch some bad places and seal code because we feel like we can bring it back to life. Uh, the other thing is, it's going to end up getting a lot of traffic over the next few years as that development comes in. So if you spend much money now, you may have to come back in and redo it again later. So we're just attempting to keep it live for the next few years. Um, we might be able to come back in and seal code it again and make it just survive forever. Never know. But there are some patches on it. There's a lot of places, um, you know, I marked a lot of them before snowbaged them. And then we came back and re-marked them. And came back and re-marked them. Some of them we ended up making them a little bigger because that snow was tough on some of the streets. And then there's some places that we had marked, just as kind of, they were kind of itty. And they survived really well. So in those areas, a lot of areas, we took out the uh patching if we were wanting to seal coat or overlay unless it was a base code. And so that's why we were able to take out a lot of the patching. But uh we left a lot of patching in. If we had a street that got no overlay or no steel coat, we left the major patching in. Donna Street was a pretty good example of that. If you drive down Donna, you'll see places where there's dips and places with cold water. Um, after a rainstorm, you'll see holes and those will not get done. It'll make it real tough on the street.
Let me ask you about Billy Joyce real quick. Do you know his name or not? I forget. On Billy Joyce, that has like the patch and where the existing road has come up and it kind of patches fell down inside the existing road. Is that something we came back and ground out of the cutout or?
Would you grind that out? What we're planning to do is we're moving to put it back.
Okay.
Uh, put the base back. There's a, a lot of times you'll end up like, I can even give examples, our driver at our office. You put a new patch in there and the patch will hold the water back on the old part because the old continues to settle. You put a piece of concrete up next to it, it'll hold water. If it holds water anywhere, just even quarter inch, that soaks in. And you'll end up seeing a base code. But uh what I propose to you is that that's what you go about bidding is about four twenty-five, that that being a base bid. And then we obtain bids for the alternate items. Uh, state law allows us to increase the bid line up to twenty-five percent without having to renegotiate with any other contractors. And I think we're in good shape with this.
Dean, just for citizens who might not know and if the citizens watching at a later date on on the YouTube, uh, can you just go over the difference of the silo code versus the overlay? Just so we can be all, make sure we're all educated on the same process that looks like.
Thank you. Uh, patching is obvious. We go in, we have an area where it's failing, we cut out, saw cut out, remove the basement, drill, put the base back and then put a layer of asphalt and make a good patch. Uh, I'm going to go with overlay, which would be a two-inch overlay of asphalt over the entire street, as you have doubted. And you've seen some of the overlay work mainly on uh shoreline over the last few years. And that'll be where you'll have a little bump at the end where it goes from two inches higher to to being flat. And uh we said, that's all you can do is you kind of just try to taper it off and make it not be so bad. Seal code, now this is the one we need to be careful now. Um, when you seal coat, you put asphalt down with a spray truck and then they spread rock on top of it. And if they do it too early in the year, in the heat of the summer, it can move. Somebody turns, it will move. We want to try to get this done at the end of August so that the maintenance on it is less for the contractor to take care of and there's less hassle for all the citizens. And when we do it, please don't drive on a black road. You'll end up a mess. I'm seeing a lady do it and ask, but it's a little turn black.
Dean, let me ask you this question about overlay. We've talked about this before, just just so it's on the record as well. Um, a concern that I have as far as overlays, we keep adding two inches, two inches, two inches wise, two inches closer to our house than we get through our varnish and our drainage system. So how does that affect our drainage? Because one's going to, it's going to affect both of them.
It's a.
It's a part of the, to the drainage. That's one reason like on Schooner, Galleon and, uh, on Steel Street. Those, if we were raising up to two inches, we'd probably block all water into somebody's house. The foot roads are above or near at, at house level there. Uh, the one down Royal Road, we've done some work over the years keeping those ditches clean, trying to keep that under control. And if we don't do something about it now, we have to go in there, grind it all out, mix it all up and then put it back at a lower elevation. Now, that would be one thing to do with the dollars just on there. The curb gutter in there and lower the whole street by, this might solve a lot of problems.
So, Dean, just to correct me if I'm wrong, but your recommendation is to go with the total without the?
I would do a mid value, a base bid of the, the total without all of us. And then we will have in there for the contractors to provide us pricing for all those alternate items. Uh, that gives us something we can work with and not have to negotiate with the contractor or paying over anything like that.
I guess my question, my next question is, is, does this, is it too far out if you're saying that most of this, which is an overlay, should be done at the end of August, but it's got to, you know, are we out too far for bids to start now as far as, how long are the bids going to be good for?
We can get, pay this, award the contract and tell the contractor that they can't start the seal coating until pick day.
If you go come most comfortable.
Yes, which that, that is going to be if they can't start working until like August twenty, like, like, whenever you want to do it.
It looks like this is touching like eighty percent of the streets, I mean.
It, it's most, it, I was surprised at how far we're at. Uh, a lot of it is, uh, a lot of the expense is patching. And that's because it's just needed to be done on the ground here. And there's some little patches that popped up over the last few weeks. And that's going, that's another thing we're going to have before we get out there with contractors, oh, we really need to do this, we really need to do that. So, we need to be careful about moving forward with all of this too soon.
And I hear you saying the end of August, that's when school starts back. So, that's when you have lots of traffic on the streets.
Oh, yes.
And school buses coming in and out. So, do you want to try to coordinate it with how school starts?
That's something we need to consider. And I, I want to talk to the contractors.
Because you've got the buses coming in.
I need to talk to a contractor or two and see what their thoughts are regarding, uh, their scheduling. But if they know that they're going to have that work, kind of the, the ones that will actually help the pricing. Right now, this pricing I got was pretty recent. So, I feel pretty good about it. But, uh, price law going up isn't helping matters anymore. But if they can get the price and lock it in, they're good.
And Dean, just so we could, we'll.
How long is the lock-in good for? Like if we, if they submit their bid and we accept it, that their materials will stay at that price? I guess that's what I'm asking.
We'll have to be very careful how we write our specifications on that.
Okay.
Um, if we tell them that, that we're awarding the contract based on this start date, they are locked in until that start date at that price. Now, we may have to pay for materials on hand to start with so that they can lock in their rock or their asphalt pricing. Then it's locked in. Uh, I'm seeing some things like PDC pipe going up pretty fast and things like, and you've heard about lumber. We all heard about it. Um, so, we should get lots of cheap plywood for thirty-five dollars.
Is that, um?
So, we need to keep that up.
And I just want to make this clear, because we looked at, we budgeted in the past and I know prior council as well, fifty thousand dollars here. We can't get anybody to show up for fifty thousand dollars with repairs.
That's true.
And that's, that's a majority of the reason why we're having to do this in one big grand slam thing, but again, we're talking about the city for all occasions, but couldn't anybody show up for what we could afford to budget at that time?
Well, and, you know, when I started talking to people, contractors about it, they said, well, how big is the shop to be? And I told them, yeah, it should be about two hundred thousand dollars overlay, two hundred seal coat. And I said, good, we can do it. We can make some money with that. We can bring you a good price. If you're down in fifty thousand dollar range, it's moving at a big expense. The bonding is, has to be done with insurance and all that over here that you're going to pay for no matter what.
So, um, I, I guess my question or, I mean, is that something you put all the specifications back, bring them back to us next council so we can vote and approve on the specifications? Or do you need that from us?
I don't especially have to have it. I just need to have, if you want to authorize, um, the city manager to advertise, we can do that.
Council, what are your thoughts on that?
It's against RFP. It would be a open bid.
We, we would have a closed, I mean, a sealed bid opening. And we have those specifications about this there.
Yeah.
Put this in time.
Where are you going on it, so?
And if there are any streets and they're going to have any ques, specific question about, please feel free to call my office. We can talk about it. We can be out here in fact time. I would go through them because I want to make sure y'all are happy to vote for it.
Council, I'm going to just take this, my, I have to study it.
I guess if, if we were to take this and study it, we still have time before you.
Sure, sure. If, if we, uh, authorize and advertise, we just need to give the contractors at least two, two weeks legally. I like to give three. Because honestly, they don't pick a plan until about a week before.
Let me ask this, this brings up, I know we silcoated, uh, one street, but not so good, um, yeah. And did, I mean, tons of rocks on the outside of the streets. Uh, of course, as cars get driving on and the rocks start breaking loose and stuff like that.
Right.
What does the cleaning process look like for that?
What they should have done is put down the ash, the asphalt, put down the rock, rolled it in and then come back and broom it. They probably left the rock on top so that they didn't, all they had to do was just kind of come in later and broom it and look it around. Contractors do that so that they don't have to be hauling in more rock. And then at, they, to a point, they've done it a couple of times. They got tired of doing it and they just quit taking care of it.
I mean, me personally and council can discuss that, but I'd like for them to see you come back and clean that up. Uh, you know, you start pushing rocks to the side, yes, where kids ride bicycles and they start having accidents. Uh, but I, I think the major thing is, is I think where we can get very technical about it is in the specifications to make sure the right timing is done for, per, per your recommendation, uh, that they come back and clean up their mess and that we again, let citizens know what streets are going to be closed, when, who, what, and where. I mean, that's on our behalf, but I feel like we need to make sure that we are in communication with you and them to make sure that we can let them know.
When they seal coat, they paint pretty quick. It's really surprising how far they go and how fast. So, you might have a street closed for a few hours. Uh, one thing that we do is we typically will use in this instance, a number four rock where the seal coat is stood, the number five, which is a little smaller popcorn looking rock. And it sticks better. Gives you a little more stability and, and it will drive down in, when they roll it, it will drive that rock down into the existing asphalt a little bit. So, we've done better luck with that. Now, we come back, if you wanted to come back later, we might come back to the number five on top of that. So, we'd have two different sizes.
What does maintenance look like from here on out with this? As far as it's done, I mean, you get a crack, do we, is that something we have to come back to, you know, a tar gun and, and fill things in? I mean, what does that look like and what is the budget?
I really would like to see us look at how, how the overlay does. I'm expecting to see a need to come back and crack seal in the winter time. When, when the cracks are open the most because it shrinks and, uh, the crack gets bigger. And you can have somebody come in and crack seal at that time.
I think that's all the questions I have.
Have you seen any, any past bids that think it's going to be local or is it going to be out in town, some money?
You'd never know, but we've got three or four contractors locally.
Okay.
And they all have a preference for local contractors.
Right.
Uh, there's some bigger outs, outside of, of downtown contractors that are working in the area right now, but they might not be working in the area in August.
Any other some counsel?
So, the, if, if he comes in at four and a quarter, do we have five hundred roughly set aside? That's seventy-five thousand done to cover the crack seal?
It's, it certainly is. Long way towards it. Uh, seal coating will help a lot. You know, a lot of those places where I call it head, you call it alligator cracks. You know what I mean by that, don't you? Uh, if we can seal coat that stuff, we can save, keep it from going, going, starting to fail later.
Is this going to be something whenever they start closing multiple roads at a time maybe or, I mean, is this, what kind of timeframe?
I think you'd see them closing a road just before they're working on it.
Okay.
Uh, if they're doing an operation that requires them to close the road. If they're doing something like cleaning off the, the weeds and dirt, not that we want to close the road there, they should have a flagman who can drive around. Be careful. That equipment's big and they may miss, you know, they may not see.
I can tell you for sure, holiday starts on August the eighteenth if that helps at all on any of that. I don't know about Archer, but normally it's kind of.
Same day.
Yeah.
I would want to stay awake for that so everybody gets a chance to get the schedule figured out.
And we want to make sure we give them the resident senate notice as well. Okay. Any other questions, counsel?
No.
Need a motion, is that correct?
Hmm.
Need a motion to go further?
Please. Just so I can advertise it.
I entertain a motion if y'all want to move forward.
I'll make the motion. Let's present it.
Mr. Ruppus makes the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Just a second. So, discussion between council. All of the fair say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, this is going to bring us to item D, discussion and consideration on traffic warning system for the Volunteer Park Department. It's been discussed, uh, when this building was going up, that, uh, the Volunteer Park Department is going to be, uh, some sort of a, a traffic warning system installed on Highway seventy-nine due to the amount of traffic flow on that road and the trucks primarily going out onto seventy-nine. Uh, it's kind of a, it's not kind of, it is, it's a safety issue for our trucks to be able to get out safely. So, this, this traffic system, um, it's a, it's a two sign system that comes with our flashers, amber flashers. Uh, the map I've got shows one going up right next to the auto shop, um, towards Wichita. And then the other one about halfway in between the first home and the second home as you head towards Archer. So, the, the system is solar powered. Um, we did, uh, enter into a little bit of an agreement with Tech Dot. That was back in October of twenty-twenty. Um, and the, the big part of it is, is that if the system is purchased, uh, Tech Dot's can actually put it up. And that's what the, uh, the verbiage says, the verbiage actually, verbiage actually says Tech Dot is responsible for providing equipment and skilled labor to install, maintain and repair the solar powered, uh, flashing signs on Tech Dot's right away. So, the system, uh, the first quote that we got, so the system itself, the, the price did not change at all from the two quotes that we had gotten. Um, we got a quote back in, uh, November of twenty-twenty. Um, I just received a new quote, um, that will expire on May thirty-first. So, the system price has not changed. Uh, it's eight thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars. Uh, it's the freight, uh, that went up. Uh, the freight originally was three, three hundred dollars to ship it. Um, that's now gone up to five hundred. So, the grand total is eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Uh, takes about thirty days, um, for them to produce the equipment. Um, the recommendation that I would have, um, we currently have left in the building contingency fund, um, nine thousand twenty-five dollars. My recommendation would be to use the contingency fund to purchase this, this system.
What's it consist of exactly?
Flashers.
Was that, sorry?
Flashers or what?
Yeah, so it'll be obviously two poles, uh, the fire truck sign, like you see, that's, that's still up down on seventy-nine for the old station. Um, so it'll be the fire truck sign and then the fire truck will be, uh, outlined in, in amber, uh, amber light. So, it won't stop traffic, but it'll only be activated when, when we need to, to help the door for response for the fire department.
So, you activate it as you pull out?
Correct. Yep. 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 And it's, it's on a timer. So, um, I can't, I believe that we can set up the, uh, the timer for how long it runs after the trucks have left. Um, so it won't, it won't be sitting there just flashing away. But, except the nice thing is, is it is solar powered. So, that we don't have to run power to it or anything like that. If I was mistaken, the, the timeframe it'll take them to build it will be four to six weeks.
My only hesitation with it is this, the, the council is, you know, I know we do have, you know, there is some, some money left over. Um, we just don't know what's the lasting due months. But I feel like personally, I feel like we're still new. Uh, we don't know what's going to be left over in this building and I hate to just, you know, I would like to see this maybe become a budgeted item.
That we can budget for next year?
Um, not, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, is that something that can wait six months till a new budget comes across? You know, that's, we can look at, is that, you know, freight might go up understandably, um, but, you know, just not, we just don't know what, what the rest is going over. We've only been in it for, you know, some months now and we don't know.
Is there a grant available?
Not for this store, type of nice. I will say this, uh, with the responses that I've been involved, they, it's a fifty-fifty shot that they'll stop where you're coming out. So, today I responded to a, a medical call and I had traffic stopped coming from the left. I didn't have traffic stop coming from the right. So, in fact, I'll take that back. I had one car stop and then another vehicle did a weird thing where they went around him and came at me as I was pulling out of the section.
I think that's the biggest thing is people driving through seventy-nine, whenever they come through, they do not pay attention at all.
I mean, that's always going to fall. Not just with the fire station, that's been, traffic fall. I do see the need that we need to have it, but I would like to be able to find a way that we can get the funds instead of using our, what we have left in this building.
Is there a hundred, top or style, it's, am I expensive or is it take less?
This was the, the cheaper.
It wasn't, okay.
Yeah. This stuff isn't cheap.
It has a solar on it too.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
What's the life expectancy on it?
Well, it's, it's LEDs. I mean, they say the LED is lifetime. So, yeah.
Any other questions for your council, something y'all on the table? John, would you mind, uh, just adding this to next month's agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Kerry Hill.
Yep.
Uh, do you remove, does it move?
Um, can I, is there any information I need to try and dig up that the council would like to know?
Like photographs, my moves, everything?
Okay. Um, probably a warranty.
Yes.
Okay.
For sure.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a letter from Tech Dot confirming that they will install?
Yep, I've got a, I have an agreement for furnishing, installing and maintenance of switch activated solar powered LED flashing warning signs.
Is this like a garage door opener switch? Your work's a switch.
Yeah, it's a key fob.
Okay.
Yep. But the key fobs are, uh, key fobs are a hundred and fifty bucks a piece.
Right.
So, um, that's kind of the case. We're probably just going to have to locate it in a central area as the members go past and slap it and get a truck and go. Because I can't see, we have eight trucks right now. I can't see spending over a grand just on the key fobs.
Is that something the, the county might be able to help on in emergency response?
That's a good question.
I didn't ask.
I mean, I, I know every budget is tied, but, I mean, like I said, it's servicing Archer County and it, I mean, county-wise, are we even Tech Dot?
Mm, Tech Dot will say be happy to split my buck for you.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of their contribution.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Oh, we can give a scar up and also, uh, murder's report here to the county.
Sure. I'm going to go to the judge.
Um, according to Robert Cole's order, I do need a motion to post comment this to. Um, according to Robert Cole's order, I do need a motion to post comments to next, council.
Like, I should, hold on, go next, council.
Mr. Kayfer makes a motion to, Mr. Robichaud seconds it, all of the players say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Even though Mr. Robichard's left, we do still have a corner, so that, that vote will still count.
Brings us to agenda item F, discussion and consideration on approval of payment to the contractor of Lone Star Way Services for septic inspections completed to date being April ninth, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. Got a little bit of background information that the council would like on those inspections, on how they went.
Please, sir.
So this round of inspections was twenty-nine inspections, at this time, um, we are at forty, actually forty-nine total inspections complete. Um, I did a quick, just a quick analysis of the twenty-nine inspections, also sent them to the sewer task force, uh, Mr. Storm. But I just did a real courtesy, just curi- curious what's going on with the inspections. Um, their biggest problem right now is, uh, the tanks are full. Um, out of the twenty-nine, out of the twenty-nine inspections that they did, eleven of them were full, um, all the way to the top.
The sewer tank?
Yes, we, yeah, the septic tank. The, the grease traps, um, three of them were full. Um, and we had some issues, I mean, with the, whenever you have the, the septic tanks full, that means that our tanks, our green tanks are full as well just because of the fault. And so that's where we're running into issues, where we're burning up pumps, um, we're burning up electrical equipment, so, um, these inspections are absolutely vital, um, it's, it's gonna do nothing but save the city money. Um, we should not have to be throwing pumps into green tanks every time we turn around, so this, this is very, um, we, uh, uh, I didn't get a number, but the number is, uh, fairly, uh, fairly up there as to the number of homeowners that didn't even know they had a septic system until Lone Star came along. Um, we're seeing excessive amounts of items that should never be put down in the toilet. Um, and I'm not gonna get into that, uh, as far as specifics, but, um, needless to say, I saw the photos and you don't wanna see them. Uh, it's, it's bad. Um, we are seeing recent tanks, um, we're seeing, uh, we did come across one tank that was damaged, um, we're actually, we're dealing with that right now, so.
Now, when you say eleven of the twenty-nine were full, are we talking solids or solids and liquids?
Well, based on pictures, they're solids.
Good.
Yeah, and, and so with tank full solids, then that means the liquids are all flowing into the green tank and then the green tank should run around and run, it just won't, it won't, it won't quit. So, and that's why we're dealing with, with burnt out pumps.
Can I, can I add one thing to it?
Uh, yes, sir.
We've also changed to a different pump, which is a lot beefier, a lot better built, so our longevity of our pump should be a lot better. And we save about two hundred dollars a piece.
Thank you, sir, for that.
We did, uh, we hit a good time, Mr. Storm informed us that the pump manufacturer was gonna be dealing with some cost increases. Um, so I went ahead and ordered, uh, ten additional pumps to make sure to keep the city's costs down, um, so we have those pumps on hand under the old pricing. Um, so we currently have a pretty decent spot, stockpile, uh, of pumps.
Do we store them or do they store them?
We store them, Mr. We've, um, stored at the, at the, the Public Works shop.
Thanks for doing that, it's very much worth it.
I have a question, uh, the list of houses that have gone through, the ones that have items in there that should not, are those newer homeowners? Or does it fluctuate where maybe it's been some people that have been here for a long time, is it, is it education?
It's a mix. It's, it's a mix, right now we're dealing, and the sewer task force can definitely echo and chime this in, it's, it, right now it's an education issue. Um, it's an education issue of, you know, you've got folks that have been living in Lakeside City for quite some time that didn't even know they had a septic. So that thing is, that thing's full. Um, then you've got newer folks that are coming in that don't realize that, like Mr. Sturgis was saying, they didn't, they don't realize that they flush and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't go into a sewer system right away, so it's definitely an education issue. Um, I've been trying to put a few, um, Os and Ends flyers on Facebook, you know, for, um, for some of the folks, obviously not everybody's on Facebook, but I definitely think education is, is kind of the key right now.
But that's what I'm wondering, if it's like new residents versus older, it's like kind of all across the board where...
It's a mix.
Okay.
At the last meeting, at the last meeting, didn't y'all have something y'all were gonna send out?
Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, I thought we did, yeah.
But we actually had somebody who's lived here since eighty-four, that didn't know your septic tank and had never been pumped since nineteen eighty-four.
That's what I'm wondering, I think.
Um, one final, uh, note on that, we have, uh, there is a pump available out there, if we do start running into septic system failures, um, we, uh, are gonna be able to offer the citizens the opportunity to either replace your tank or put in this new style, um, pump that's actually a pump and grinder altogether. Um, so when they flush the toilet, it's gonna grind everything up and then it'll send it to the litter room, so, um, it'd be a really, it, it, talking to Jeff, the contractor for Lone Star, it's kind of a cost thing between six thousand dollars for your new septic system or two grand to put in this, this new style pump, it's a pump and grinder. Um, so very excited to be able to offer the, uh, the citizens some choices as far as that goes, it'll be some sticker shock.
All right, Ian, can I motion, Ian, ready?
Make a motion, make a claim, Lone Star Way's one, seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Williams seconds it, sorry, Mr. Kayfer made a motion, Ms. Williams seconds it, discussion between council? All of the players say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Brings us to agenda item G, discussion and consideration on awarding the sale of two city properties that were advertised. I have the sealed bids, um, Mr. Mayor, would you like to open?
There are three envelopes, one is titled Royal Road bid, one's titled bid for a CB lot, and one is not titled, we'll go with the bid for CB lot. Um, this, this is for the sum of twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, CB lot. This untitled one. This is for the Royal Ro- uh, Royal Road lot, thirty-seven thousand three hundred and one dollars and fifty-two cents. How much do you need?
Thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-seven, three oh one, fifty-two. This is, uh, second bid for the Royal Road. Thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Tony, you know, for the bids we're submitted by, would, would all be needed to know?
We don't, yeah, we need to know who you're gonna, yes, who the bids were submitted by and then obviously who decided to award.
Let's go with the, uh, the CB lot. Um, that is by Mike Davis and Pam Morgan, again, for the sum of twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. I believe it is even, it looks like an eight, but we got two zeros.
Was the, was the lot number?
Is the one that backs up to the score?
Twenty-two.
It's lot eight, block eight, sorline, number three addition. Now, we're intending to motion to accept that bid.
Can I make a motion to accept a bid, CB lot?
Go ahead, make sure this, um, Don, would you confirm that this is the, uh, warranty deed that we submitted? Is that, that's what we put out there, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
With all the deed restrictions?
Yes, you don't go in, yeah.
That's correct.
You have the address, it's just sort of long.
It's not the address, it's just where it's under the, uh, which kind of...
For sure.
Yeah, if that's, uh, to follow the Crystal Edwards.
Yep, all right, can I make a question?
Make a motion to accept a bid on the lot, CB, twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Kayfer makes the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Discussion between council? All of the players say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That will bring us to the Royal Road lot. These are just on some sheets of paper. Uh, first one is, uh, Charles Chumley, uh, again, his, this bid was for thirty-seven thousand three hundred and one dollars and fifty-two cents. The Royal Road lot bid, uh, the second is, uh, Royal, uh, Ricardo Sanderwall for thirty thousand five hundred. I do not have the lot number or block number, be done with.
I've got the street.
You know what?
I've got the office.
Okay. Coming in the circle at the end of Royal?
He kind of goes up to the park also, but it's one fifty on here, on this one.
Move to drive it to something.
Oh, no, that's one on three.
Yeah.
All three. I entertain a motion, Ian, ready?
Would you say last name, Chumley? I'd make a motion to accept that bid of thirty-seven thousand three hundred and one dollar and fifty cents, of the Royal Road lot.
Mr. Robichard makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kayfer seconds it, discussion between council? All of the players say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion passes.
Brings us to agenda item H, discussion and consideration of, on the hiring of park employees.
Yep.
So we currently have, um, we advertised it, uh, we currently have, uh, three teenagers, uh, that have applied for, uh, this position and then we've had one adult, um, also, uh, apply to the position. Um, in discussion with, uh, um, different park folks and, uh, Eric in Pass, uh, kind of came up with a little bit of a game plan, um, obviously with the council's approval. Uh, we were looking at, uh, doing two folks, um, actually hiring two, two individuals, um, to, to help out at the park. It'd be a seasonal position, um, I'd like to hire as soon as possible, um, cause Don is, is busy, so. Um, but I'd like to hire, uh, two out of the, uh, four, um, that have applied. Uh, we're thinking right now eleven dollars per hour, um, twenty hours per week for individual, um, is fair. Um, they would kind of make their own hours, but with a lot of, uh, a lot of top cover, um, from me, so. We currently have left, um, in the, the parks, um, budget as far as, um, pay goes, uh, we currently have five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars left, um, in that budget, so. Eventually, we're gonna bust that amount, um, if we go this route or where the council decides, but...
So eleven dollars for there for two people?
Yes, sir.
What age are the teenagers?
I'm sorry?
What age were the teenagers? Two, where is, two are eighteen and one is seventeen and one sixteen, okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and the, the adult is, uh, um, military, um, he would be able to work, uh, mainly after work, um, obviously with the, you know, more sunlight at night, um, that kind of thing. Uh, he'd also be able to do weekends, that sort of thing as well, he would have a lot of money on weekends.
Are these all residents of Lakeside City?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am, yeah. Yeah, and the, the adult, he actually lives right across the street from the park, so.
So this might sound petty, but my, my concern about that is, that's when everybody uses the park.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, that's the majority hours, using it on the weekends and all that stuff, so. Uh, not that there aren't individuals who use it during the week when we are mowing and stuff, but that's the majority of the time. Um, the one thing I do like about having two individuals do it is a hundred percent safe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that, that is my, that's my biggest concern, uh, not for age, for anybody, I mean, we put, we put people out in these mowers and stuff like that and, you know, it's, they're, they're grown adults too, but we also have, um, some people who are working start, put their time and money into their city. And we wanna respect that as well, but I think we wanna look at it from a safety standpoint as far as two individuals. Um, you put two people out for the weekend, you always have somebody who's kind of watching your back and guys.
And, and that got brought up, I, I personally, if, if we get two individuals, I'll probably have to unhandle the, the, the lagoon, um, him being an older gentleman and giving a lot more experience out there with how the lagoon acts with the grass and, you know, the, the slopes and whatnot. Um, the safety aspect, I, I'll be honest, I can sit there and watch him on camera too, um, when he's mowing, uh, so. I'd, I'd like to have, if, if, let's say we hired two, two teenagers, um, I'd love to, to be able to continue to bring them back year after year, um, and just have them reapply and, um, I'd love to have them focus on the park and, and standard the west side and taking care of our, our properties on the west side of the park, um, mowing at the, uh, the boat ramp, keeping that all picked up and cleaned as well. Um, they're not just gonna be mowing, they're also gonna be, you know, I, I want them to be taking the trash out and, you know, checking out the bathrooms and making sure that, that park is gonna be their responsibility, it's gonna be their investment.
And, but there are items on the east side that will need mows.
And that would be Don, I'd, I'd have Don take care of that, kind of split it up, yeah.
I think it's a great opportunity for the youth, especially, you know, to give them, them the chance to start their job. You're glad they wanna work.
Yeah, and to, we've heard two out of the three, and it's not faulting the third by any means, two out of the three, um, kind of highly recommended as far as they've, they're already doing lawns here in, in Lakeside. The beauty of me being new is, is I don't know that, so I'm gonna go into it with a very open, you know, kind of an open attitude and, you know, kind of see what their experience levels are and their attitudes and, yes, sir, and I'm sure that's what...
Well, I know we always have a surplus, you said this is gonna overrun the, the budget.
It should, it just depends on the hours they work, I mean, if, I'm not gonna have them out there, I'm not gonna basically say, if we hit a drought and there's nothing to mow, I'm not gonna have them doing it.
So, June, July, August, they may just be mowing.
They may just be picking up, walking through, picking up, uh, Powerade bottles from the, from the disc golfers. So, you know, that's, that...
Just a short period.
Right, exactly, they may only get in a couple hours, and I'll explain that to them, that this could be a, a little bit of this deal, but if we get rain all, you know, all summer, they, they easily hit that twenty hours, so.
Those are the things that, the poles for the, the street signs, stuff, the plating, repainted, the color, paint on those things, stuff like that. Um, I would just, I would, I would for sure hold them twenty hours over time, you know, twenty hours.
Right, yeah, you're, you're maxed out at twenty, absolutely, yes, sir.
And I think if, if, I think if these individuals, they should still be in school, so that's also something to look at, as hopefully it starts slowing down, so. That's budgeted till the end of September, December, thirtieth, so we could only be using them till mid-August.
Yeah.
You know, and then have Don just maintain the rest throughout the, the rest of the fall season, that type of deal. So we, we could not go over possible.
Exactly.
I think Don, I looked at some numbers, could go over a little bit, uh, and I say a little bit, but maybe as low as not going over to going over by, I think, what, two thousand, maybe something like that, would be the most.
Yeah.
I, I think if we, if they're going back to school, we, we wanna respect that, not put them in a situation where they have to use, or if we're working all weekend long and they go into school, we wanna make sure that their, their schooling is successful as well, so. I, I think if we, if they're going back to school, we, we wanna respect that, not put them in a situation where they have to use, or if we're working all weekend long and they're going to school, we wanna make sure that their, their schooling is successful as well, so, uh, really, we're looking at to the mid-August.
Why don't we watch the, why don't we watch the Monday part of it too?
Yes, sir.
Are there gonna be criteria, I know you said that they can kind of make their own hours, but is there gonna be, uh, like a limitation criteria on, yes, you can make your own hours, but it needs to be between like, you know, seven AM and five or six, something like that?
And that's, that's kind of what I meant by, they can make their own hours, but there's gonna be heavy top cover from me.
Okay.
So, you know, well, I, I only want to work from four to six at night, well, that doesn't, you know, so, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with them and, and see how, how, what they think, and give them at least opportunity, give them the input and work from there.
Um, are, since they are in school, are any of them athletes that may start two a days in, I think it's like, they can start, uh, August first?
I think it's the very beginning of August, yeah.
I think it's August first for you.
That hasn't, yeah, I mean, we literally, all we got from them is their name and their phone number.
Okay.
Um, so yes, that's definitely a question I'll, I'll need to ask, yep.
Anything else made to come down to you, we're here for the responsibility of having you to act, so, but those are good points, and we gotta make sure we're watching out for it.
Yeah, I definitely don't want to set them up to fail, it's, you know, it's not worth it for eleven dollars a ton.
Anything else from council? That's something I'm gonna move forward on, I'll attend the motion.
I'll make the motion, once we, uh, we pay attention to the budget, and I will be there.
So my understanding is you make the motion for two individuals, eleven dollars an hour, no more than twenty hours, and should we become over budget?
Please.
Advice council?
Yeah.
Understood.
Is there a second? If we can second sit, discussion between council. Again, I think it's just gonna be, uh, keep in check of the hours and then what's left, and just maybe even a monthly report on more route.
Okay.
Anything else from council? All of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Motion passes.
Brings us to agenda item I, discussion and consideration on the interview process of hiring a city administrator.
Uh, we have posted on TML, um, I have got several, um, people who have sent me their applications, all the applications are going to, uh, ARO email. Uh, what I'd like to do is, is go ahead and maybe set up some tentative dates, um, looking at the calendar so we can go ahead, we know, uh, in order for us to, in, in council, please, correct me if I have other opinions, uh, we would probably do the first round of interviews via phone, uh, council will be in attendance. Um, we'll be going to executive session or allow the interview, we have a choice of open session or executive session. But I'd like to go ahead and just set two dates so that we can go ahead and get together, um, my guess is we're not gonna get them all done in, in one day, we could, we could not, uh, we need to go ahead and set those dates. My, uh, my thought is probably. When is that, when is, when does it stop, is it on the fifth or the seventh?
The fifth.
Fifth. Good. So the week of the ninth, oh, sorry, the tenth through the fourteenth, I would just ask for two dates, um, reminding ourselves that the next week we will also be meeting Thursday for our, yeah, Tuesday for the regular city council meeting, so. Tenth being a Monday, fourteenth being a, a Friday, two dates.
Oh, good, any of those dates?
Yeah.
Do we know what Brad would be working, would be working at?
He's on the day, so. He's off, he has any vacation.
That's what I'm saying, is it gonna be like during the day or what?
No, I mean, I'd find guys at six to eight. Probably guys from five to five.
Lieutenant and the fourth, unless he's.
So Monday, Friday, so what would he be off during the week, did he do that come Monday, Wednesday?
About ten, about the tenth and twelfth.
I mean, if we can knock them all out in one day.
He's on, he'll be on duty the twelfth that week.
Okay, so let's do.
Ten, eleven?
Ten, eleven, Monday, Tuesday. We, uh, we'll just start at five thirty and, um, let's assume that we get a look from there, but we'll make sure we five thirty start. Can I give that?
Yes.
May ten and eleven. Don, if he'll send that email to all the council, reminding that, that's Brad's, I hear, Allison, where we have to do that, which I didn't.
So is that gonna be like a Zoom call, do you think?
Uh, we could do Zoom, we, yeah, and we've always decided, uh, a conference call will be absolutely new Zoom.
Uh, either way, I just, how, pretty specific.
Well, uh. Yeah, well, probably, my, honestly, myself and Cole will probably get together, kind of go through and call, um, I, I would like to have a second representative, it can be a mayor pro team there, uh, in case something happens to me, you would know what's going on, but also the, the ways of calling every African that we can have. Uh, once it ends, um, I will send the resumes to Allison, and then she will send it off to council for you to review.
Okay.
Um, it can't come from me, uh, it has to come from Allison, so to make sure that, uh, should the interim city manager apply that, he is not at any means, CD, that application.
Does that make sense?
Fine. So probably we'll get that. Anything else? Discussion, all right.
Brings us to discussion, item J, discussion and consideration of appointment of the chief financial officer for the city of Lakeside City.
So this has been a talk with me from, uh, Mike Edson, um, right now we have, we could possibly have, uh, more people's hands in the financial situation than we want to with Eric leaving, Don being the interim, possibility of a new city manager in there, uh, just kind of talking edge in this might be, and this, the, this thing came to us from Mike Edson, who he recommended, um, and, and gave us the name. And the reason for this by the chief financial officer is just to make sure that, um, everything is still coked the same way, that everything financially is done, uh, consistently, and that, that none of us are, again, in, in, in with anything, and that, um, it, it takes, it takes all of our hands, including John, Jack Tim, and the new city manager, whoever that might be, to make sure that the city can still run financially stable, that everything is getting done, you know, uh, driving the t's across, um, and then also this includes him training, should the new city administrator need that, to make sure there's a soft handoff, and it's really just to make sure that everything financially is still getting done the way it needs to get done.
So this will be for just a few months?
It's, it's gonna be a contract employee that, if we, we buy them also, as needed, uh, I will tell you probably for the first quarter, as I mean, you're gonna see the most amount from him until we can, till the city administrator is here, uh, I'll also work with Allison to make sure that there's just a, a consistency with us, um, in that we also have the documentation for it, if something happens, we have, now have somebody, um, documented if something happens to the city administrator or something like that, we would have somebody to fall back on, already a contract employee who could pick up and carry the finances for the city, and so it can get handled. Um, it's really just more of a, and can imagine, just more of a security blanket for all of us, uh, to make sure that we can continue city business if something happened to yours.
And we reached out, or anybody talked to him, see, Prassen, or that's what we did?
I'm happy to, Prassen, or.
Watch out if you're.
Yes.
Um, services of Evan Peacock, or do you build at the rate of a hundred and twenty-five per hour, plus round trip mileage at the current IRS rate? Um, services of his wife, uh, Nicola Peacock, or do you build at the rate of seventy-five dollars per hour, plus round trip mileage at the current IRS rate? Um, clerical services shall build at the rate of fifty dollars per hour, plus round trip mileage at the current IRS rate. A daily trip fee of two hundred and fifty dollars will be charged, um, for onsite visits. And Eddie Peacock will provide us with an accurate counting of time spent on the project, either onsite or otherwise. And city will be invoiced weekly for the hours worked with payment, uh, term to do within ten days of receipt.
Uh, most of mine are seen, John, for our home, most of his stuff is gonna be done from his house, uh, he will not be, he might have to make a trip here or two, uh, but most of it's done from his house, uh, or mostly.
We can do almost everything, Dr. Mobley, there will.
Cause he, and he's familiar with the system, we have to, that correct?
Yes.
So that's, that's, uh, something for us to look into, I, I think, personally, I think we need to, if something happens, somebody, we need to have a backup, while we've never had a backup, I don't know, but, um, you know, when this is speaking over there, please, kind of pretend to, you know, what would, what would happen?
And if, if I may interject, um, it's also really great, like, investment wise, because he can help me if I, if anything were now going to me, really get that book in detail for, if someone were to come in, maternity leave, leave, whatever wise, they could really go by that and make sure that it's, you know, step by step, I don't really trip it out, anything like that, so it really is a great investment, and that step lasts forever.
And again, I believe his contracts are a hundred and twenty days at a time? What did you say?
I'm looking, all I see, all I see right now is, is that he needs at least thirty days notice to come and make.
Okay, so, Eddie, it's, it's a, it's a contract, we're gonna bring him on, is that correct, Tom, is it their contract services?
Yes, that's correct, yep. Yeah, he's an independent contractor, it says in his, his contract. It also says that he has no right, power, authority to create any obligation expressed or implied or make any, uh, representation on behalf of the client, which is us, so he's not allowed to make any decisions for us, just advise.
So the difference in pay compared to what we bring this term, kind of, most of that cost is what it's paying. Be a little.
Hope they come up, hope they come up to you.
Council counting on people cheaper, anyway, we could call whoever, but I'd have to complete that for us, and Elton recommended anyone.
It's not his mind.
Yeah. Edson can't do it, he would do it, can't do it because he's also our oddity person, so he has to have a third break on.
I don't think we trust his recommendation on anything.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir, one, if you're all ready.
Then I will make that motion, pass, presented.
Mr. Riddges makes the motion, is there a second?
One second.
Any other discussion between council? I don't want my views to push off on anybody, but I do think it is a very wise suggestion as part of the insurance policy, we, for this day, we don't have any documentation books on how that needs to go down, some of that, and stuff. Any other comments from council? I'll call for the vote, all of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Motion passes.
That is the end of regular agenda items.
Okay. We will go around, um, this way, you see everything?
I do not.
Mr. Riddges.
I mean, um, because of the conversations earlier about the motor, I would like us to bring it up and talk about that next month, obviously, there's a lot of conversation, since I've been on council, I think we talked about it one time, I didn't know it was even there, talking about on council, so I think with somebody to look at, maybe look at some type of, something across the front, to barricade, or maybe some poles and some wire in the gate, if there's a problem, that people go down there and, and, I don't know, drinking or partying or just, you know, playing in the dirt, I don't know, but maybe there's something to talk about and think about.
I'll just, just to talk a little bit on that real quick, I mean, this is the first, this for, you know, most of them have gone, but.
Yeah.
This is the first time it's been presented to council.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I want to make that aware to, to the citizens out there as well, this is the first time for us, anybody, if there is no, we haven't really entertained.
No, at all time, I remember that is, when we had, when we turned that thing that went out and turned the game, and then we went over there, they know it even existed.
So I'll contact these individuals, let them know that that was the first time we've heard as well, just, uh.
Years ago, it was brought up, that was one of the sites that we were going to put the park on, because the city owned that lot, and they would give us that part before we ever even got into the grand process, so it's been just sitting there. As a boat ramp.
Yeah, I use it to launch my.
Right, I was just saying, I mean, I think it's definitely worth looking into on making it something nicer.
I mean, if you all would like to put that in motion, just give it, Tom?
When you control it out here, do you see a lot of this stuff that's, that's, I don't, I mean, that's being said?
Right.
I, I don't live that far in Lakeside, so I don't ever go around that far, but.
I only had to go out there one time since freshman year for a call, so.
I, I'd kind of be interested to, to talk to him and see what's, what's going on, because I mean, I do get.
I mean, I'm right back there, decently close to him.
I already messaged her.
Okay.
About this, so.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, I mean, we, if, if they think you're really watching it, you know, don't quit.
That's first by first, but.
Doing stuff there.
No one's interested.
Maybe on down road.
There's a lot of people that do use it, and.
Yes.
Like I said, there's probably three weeks till we had a call there, and there was about six units there in a matter of five minutes, so.
Right. But, I mean, uh.
They should know it's watched.
I'd like to see.
It's a great product access for like South City residents, I'm like.
Was it, was it local or was it family?
Just to be specific, how, how do you, what do you want to discuss, you want to discuss security, security measures, do you want to discuss?
Security measures, you know, yeah, security measures, for sure, um, I'd like to, you know, maybe get out and we can talk to the, the people who are here today and find out, you know, more about that, that's first off, or that, but, and ways we can secure that lot, maybe keep traffic from going down.
I, I will say that, and the reason why I brought this up to them at the, at the event, was in my research, I came across a grant that had actually been approved by Texas Parks and Wildlife.
I do remember you said about that.
You know, an actual nice dock, and it had a parking lot, and it was a whole plan, and I have that in my possession, so, um, it's, it's a good plan, um, and I think that probably, probably is what kind of sparked their interest.
I think it doesn't need to be on the agenda, I think we need to tackle it from one, if, if there was any talk, or if there isn't any talk, are we gonna sell it or not, are, are there any interests, and that's gonna, that's gonna still, to, to move on, how council chooses to move on, and then, should we decide not to sell it, it's, I don't think we've ever discussed that, so it'd be, that threw me off, but, um, what, what do we want to do, what, what, what do, and we can do that as a workshop, actually, we can probably just have a workshop, uh, but, we, we can look into, but, I mean, my, my guess is if we've never even thought about entertaining the sale, I guess we just need to put that on the agenda, just what we talked about.
About the sale?
Yeah, it's a.
Is that, is, will that be a separate item or do you want me to lump all, all that together?
I'll, I'll.
That's all I have.
Okay.
That's everybody's day, and Mr. Wong, we'll talk about that.
And I believe, this is your last one, right? So, we definitely appreciate your time, um, and everything, and so we hope, uh, it could be your next, I really appreciate it. Tom?
What's your move here?
No?
Sound good?
Okay.
Okay, um, only thing I also have is, uh, again, and I know it was said before, and I'll say it again, uh, thank you to the service task force for all they do, we definitely appreciate, uh, Tom, and everything that goes into it, Donald, thank you for being here, and, and thank you for the citizens for being here, um, you know, I, when I walk into a council chamber and it's four people, uh, it excites me, because everyone, and I think that, that's what we need, we need more of showing up, voice, and, and that's probably the longest that we've had, and I appreciate everybody coming to voice their opinions, and, and let us know, that's what we're here to do, is to help the citizens out, and to, uh, to be a voice for them, so.
Said one thing, because a lot of people don't realize, it's on Friday, we get the agenda package, so we really just have the two, three days to research it, and, and come up with an answer, or even consideration for what we're gonna do with that, so, I don't know, I think it's a lot of people think we have a whole month to look at that, to what we only have for three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or four days.
Would you like it, would you like it sooner?
No, I, I think it, the big point is, we're getting the information at the same time everybody else is, so there's no hiding, or like, we're getting it sooner or anything like that.
I mean, I can, I've already got next month's.
If you get it out sooner, you know, we, but you have to post it.
The problem is the posting of it, right, because you can't send it out to us.
Yeah, I mean, you have to post it, and we send it to us, and I, I don't have a problem with that, but, on some of the issues, it'd be nice to have a week or ten days to look at it, or.
Well, I think the main thing is that you, uh, you have to have up to a certain hour to add things on, so, um, I definitely look into amending and that sort of thing, so we can have.
You may just have to leave it as it is, and just make sure people understand we have the same, a limited time.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that's sort of why it goes out, so, cause you have to, what you hold up.
I have one last item, just real quick, if you see pipe laying out on the ground on the east side, um, where the new road is going in, so, when Dean and I were walking streets a couple weeks ago, um, the trench that was made for the pipe was going like this, and going like this, and when Dean looked at it, he said, that's, that's not gonna fly, we're gonna have issues down the road, we're gonna have, that's where our leaks are gonna be, um, so I went ahead and got ahold of the contractor, and, uh, basically said, you're gonna have to redig this thing. I have one last item, just real quick, if you see pipe laying out on the ground on the east side, um, where the new road is going in, so, when Dean and I were walking streets a couple weeks ago, um, the trench that was made for the pipe was going like this, and going like this, and when Dean looked at it, he said, that's, that's not gonna fly, we're gonna have issues down the road, we're gonna have, that's where our leaks are gonna be, um, so I went ahead and got ahold of the contractor, and, uh, basically said, you're gonna have to redig this thing, um, for our city engineer, so they pulled the pipe out, unfortunately, um, the contractor, they glued the pipe together and not press fit it together, um, so every bit of that blue pipe that's out there is garbage now. Um, we, we tried to get, they tried to get a waiver from the manufacturer to, uh, prove use with glue, and the manufacturer shot him down within fifteen minutes, we got that email back, so, uh, bottom line, that, that, that trench is gonna have to be redug, um, it's gonna be done, redug, dug right, um, and, uh, they're also gonna have to come up with a whole lot of new pipes, so far, he's only been able to track down a hundred, a hundred feet of pipe, so, when we go back.
How much does, how much does he need?
He's a lot, yeah, he, he's, he needs a lot, a hundred feet isn't gonna do it, so, um, but that's, that's on him, that's no, it's not any cost that's gonna come out of anybody else that's out of his pocket for, for doing what he did.
It was funny, yeah, that, whatever, uh, it's certainly excited to do his depth, as you can do there.
Yeah, unfortunately, his depth changed dramatically in, in several spots, and we don't, we definitely didn't want the city to have issues ten, fifteen down, years down the road with, with pipe breaks, especially when it's gonna be very close to people's front yards, so.
Especially now, is, will Dean approve that before they put the pipe?
Yeah, absolutely, a hundred percent, yeah, yeah.
Always gonna motion in there, and Dela, rid.
I'll make a motion, may adjourn.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Start of the second, last time, all fair say aye, opposed say no.